Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Thursday, June 26, regular city council meeting, especially early at 4:30. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen.
Present.
Councilmember Orbach.
Here.
Councilmember Westman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Morgan.
Here.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Well, everyone, please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening. Afternoon.
Brings us to presentations. Tonight's presentation is a proclamation honoring the 2025 torch run. Saw photos today of the torch run and the Capitola police officers and city staff rocked their ride, which is always great to see. But this law enforcement torch run is for Special Olympics. It is the biggest fundraiser that they have all year long, and I'll let the chief talk a little bit more about it, but I was involved with it for many years, and it's a great, great thing. Thank you, Chief.
I was expecting Captain Moreno. This is his baby. He has participated in Special Olympics for as long as I can remember, and it's a fantastic partnership that has taken place with all public safety. We used to pass along the torch and the run would go all throughout the county. Today's event was shorter, and everybody survived the two-and-a-half-mile run, and starting at Natural Bridges, and then they had a brief ceremony, I believe it was at the lighthouse. So I think Captain Moreno is icing his feet, but very proud of, he harasses and rallies all of us together, and there is a great photo of law enforcement leadership at the event today. So we will continue to participate until they stop doing it.
Great. I have a proclamation I will be proud to give you.
Okay.
And just like to also say that it's really great because it helps 3,100 women, men, and young children with Special Olympics. So it's a great thing to do, and really glad to see our law enforcement carries on the tradition.
Thank you.
Staff received numerous additional materials for tonight's agenda. We had for item five, one email received after publication of the agenda packet. 7A, staff issued a correction to the minutes. 7B, one email was received. 8B, one email was received, and a staff memo was issued with an updated attachment. 8C, one email was received, and 8F, three emails were received. All materials are available for public review in the back of the room and online, and were distributed to the council before tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Number five, oral communications with members of the public. Members of the public will have just three minutes to speak. If you'd like your name for the record, please state so.
Hello. My name is Nina. Um, the pressure on the playground isn't the target. It's personal. Growing a disabled child, I didn't have a place where I walk sidelines, so that I'm not being left out, and I don't want that to happen to other kids. That's why the playground matters so much. Pressure with a place where no child is still being around, you don't fit, what decision for you? Here, help, rather than be on faith, act, and just be okay. I want to keep out with county programs and our community that are true leader and inclusive way. Together, we've got parks, children, everyone in the community, and that this is an extra incentive. The playground is more than a incentive. It's a message, a message that is real, and the way we're building future where no child is left out, not just scared of it. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Clark, Vice Mayor Morgan, and Councilmember Jensen, Orbach, and Westman. Today, I come to introduce myself, my name is Joe. Father, President, and Attorney.
Oh, thank you. I manage 70 rentals up here in the Jewel Box neighborhood, and today I've come to introduce myself to the leaders of my city and offer my skill set. My skills range over many different industries, but I am a problem solver, and that's what I'm here today is to tell you guys that if there are any positions in the city or any areas where I can make a difference, I'd like to, and that's all I'm here for today. It's good to meet you guys. My name is Joe. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, we'll take it to staff comments.
We do have a couple of staff comments this evening. I believe Nikki Bryant will be up first.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Next week is July, and I am here to make sure that everybody is aware that the National Recreation and Park Association has a national campaign that is July is Parks and Recreation Month. And so in this county, all of the Parks and Recreation Departments collaborate together to make sure that there are lots of opportunities throughout the county and then here in the city as well. So to kick off July is, we are going to start with our family wharf swim, which is going to be on July 2. We are also doing Carnival at Jade Street Park on July 10, which is a family-friendly, non-alcohol-based event. So please come visit that. There will be bounce houses and a food truck and some field games. And then everybody in the county can look forward to Family Fun Day, which is July 19, and it is Scotts Valley is hosting this year's Family Fun Day at Sky Park. So please, in the month of July, find your park, find your programs. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have a brief update on a grant that we've applied for, not the one that we're going to talk about later tonight, but the Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant from Caltrans. We expect to hear a decision on that supposedly tomorrow, but definitely within the next two weeks. We applied for that in January for the city's first active transportation plan, our ATP. So that is a plan for multimodal movement, bikes, peds, scooters throughout the city, and then also to and through the village. So again, we anticipate hearing about that here in the near future. That application was put in in January with a prior council direction before this council's direction on municipal code 8.72 or Measure L. So just wanted to make it clear if we are awarded that grant, and we are very hopeful, we are, because we had a very competitive application for this grant cycle, that will work both with Caltrans, who is the awardee of the money, and then also our co-applicant Acology Action on working on that final scope and the contracts that we will have to have with both entities, that it aligns with council's current action. But again, hoping to hear about that in the next week or so, and we'll definitely update council and the community on its results. Thanks.
Thank you. See no further staff comments, we'll take it to...
I did have one more.
I'm sorry?
I just did want to encourage members of the public who may be new to the community and interested in volunteering with the city that we do have a number of vacancies on boards and commissions, and if anyone is interested, you can always go to our website, click right up top on Boards and Commissions, and submit your application.
Thank you. Now I'll take it to the secret council members. Councilmember Orbach.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I've got a few updates. I was at the Children's Network meeting on June 17. We received a presentation from Cradle to Career and heard about all the powerful and impactful work that they do for underserved community. Their organization empowers families, especially parents, as leaders in advocating for their children's education, health, and emotional wellbeing, starting from the classroom-level workshops and growing into district-wide initiatives. They've distributed over half a million dollars in direct services to families by strategic partnership with schools, health providers, and community groups. This is an organization that is actively working to ensure the tenants of the Children's Bill of Rights are upheld, and I commend them for all the work that they're doing. I also attended the Library Financing Authority meeting last night. We approved the Fifth Amendment to the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement to establish new contributions based on a per capita formula, which seems to be most equitable. We also approved the fiscal year 2025 and 2026 proposed budget, and I'm happy to report that the budget is balanced. As many of you know, I'm a mother of three young kids under 10. I'm a wife, a sister, a daughter of immigrants, and a family nurse practitioner, and I'm also a councilwoman. This is the hardest job I've ever had. I fully acknowledge that there's a lot to learn, and I'm still learning, and I know I have made some mistakes. I am human, just like you all. When I made my comments on April 17, I responded in a way that felt most authentic to me. I did not mischaracterize the individual or call him names. I simply stated the facts. While I acknowledge the mistake of calling him out by name, which I will never do again, I do not regret speaking truthfully about what transpired and how certain behaviors of community members have made me feel. My highest priority is to protect my family and ensure the health and safety of my family. I believe threatening behavior of any kind should never be tolerated, and I'm sure my council members would agree. I want to put this behind me and move forward in a productive and respectful manner. I've talked to the Conflict Resolution Center to help mediate this issue. Just earlier today, I sent an email to this individual advocating for a new kind of conversation, one guided by experienced facilitators who can help us move beyond our misunderstandings, and I hope he'll accept. Lastly, I just want to say that we lost one of our local legends last week, Mike Rockin. I served on the Metro Board with him, and when I decided to run for council, he endorsed me. Today, I want to honor his spirit of grace, civility, and decades of progressive advocacy. There's going to be a Metro meeting tomorrow in these chambers and here in Capitola, where he'll be recognized for his decades of service, and I hope you'll join me. Thanks.
Mayor Jensen?
Yeah, thank you. So this, last week, I attended the Monterey Bay Air Resource District Board meeting. We had our second hearing and our final review, and we approved the rate increase and also approved the budget for the 25-26 year. They also have established a wood burning, or a continuous of the wood burning stove grant program, which if anybody has a just sole source of heat, you could receive a $2,500 credit towards replacing that, or if you went to a heat pump for your main source of heat, there was a $5,000 grant. So it's nice to see that, to help us work together on controlling with air quality in our area. And then we went to closed session, and we reviewed our performance, the performance evaluation process that we'll be using for the pollution control officer. I'm in this closed session, so we just went through the process that we'll be using it, and so we're working through that. Let's see, I also worked with Mayor Clark, and he might elaborate, but we collaborated on the letter as we discussed last week for the RTC, which I think will be issued in the very near future. And just a couple small, I guess, comments or just requests, I guess, so I don't have to do it during our consent agenda, would just be if we could look at in the future having the Cliff Resilience Project, the agenda is that project, so that it can be, I see that we're processing pay requests to, for the design and stuff like that, and I think it'd be great to reach back out to our community and let them know what that project's going to look like. And then also just around the grants, and thank you, Jessica, for the update, and I saw that we have another grant here, just in the future, if we could get a copy of the grants sent to us as council members, so we can read through the grant, not just the staff report, I think it'd be very helpful for me to get the whole background. So that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Westman?
I don't really have an update. I'd just like the opportunity to thank Councilmember Orbach for deciding to work to resolving this issue, and I think it's important for the city to do whatever resources we need to make certain that this takes place. I know that the person who wrote the complaint isn't required to participate with you, but I certainly hope that they will, because I think that kind of resolution is certainly a much better way of going than having the item come before the city council, which is the way it's outlined in the Code of Conduct. So I would also like to ask that we perhaps look at our Code of Conduct, I think that's been mentioned before, because I think we need to come up with perhaps a different system, because I think it puts council members in quite an awkward spot to be sort of judge and jury of another council member. That's just not a comfortable process for me. So I would like to see us do that. I hope that you're successful, so this issue will be able to end with that, and we won't have to have a hearing. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I commend you for, you know, putting yourself out there. This, you're right, this job is not easy, and so to all of us up here, you got this. I'm in full support of your communication, and hopefully the city can help facilitate in some way. I would back that for sure. On lighter news, on Thursday, Councilmember Orbach, Mayor Clark, and I all attended the New Grocery Outlet ribbon cutting. It's on 41st Avenue where the old New Leaf used to be. Really pleased to see a lot of faces. It was packed. The line was long, but the vibes were great. DJ was playing. We met the owner. She's a local woman. She's, you know, doing great by her family and by the community, really good prices. Go check it out. Also, Sunday, I attended our first Makers Market, put on by Parks and Rec, and saw a lot of our staff, saw a lot of shoppers and locals and non-locals, bought a few things. So definitely check out the next one. This one was at Espinod Park, but the next one will be at the foot of the Wharf, which I think will be cool to see as well. So thank you, recreation. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I do have to also acknowledge the past mayor of Santa Cruz, five-time mayor, Mike Rockin. A legacy. Our heart goes out to the family and friends. With that, that'll bring us to number seven, consent items.
I can move the consent items, 7A through D.
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Bring us to item eight, general government. Start out with item A, Capitola Village and Wharf Building Improvement, let's try that again, Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessment for Fiscal Year 2025 and '26.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have a very short presentation for you today. Primarily, my recommendation this evening is that we continue this noticed hearing until July 24, our next regularly scheduled council meeting. The reason for that is, is as we got into this year's update, staff began doing some research into some of the formation documents and identified some areas that I think could be cleaned up a little bit. So we've been in communication with the current BIA, talking through what those cleanups might look like, making sure we've got everything exactly perfectly. We're working closely with them, and we're recommending a one-month continuance at this time to give us a little bit more room to make sure we have everything right. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Council questions?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the staff for catching this issue and bringing it up and doing such a thorough job working with the BIA. I think we all want everyone to be successful, and I appreciate that you caught this and you're working to make it even better. Thank you.
Great. That'll bring us to public comment. See no public comment? Take it to council deliberations.
I'll make a motion to continue this item to July 24.
A second. First and a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Brings us to item B, Capitola Wharf Master Plan, Public Input Summary.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to be here tonight to bring you up to date on the last month of public input on our Capitola Wharf Master Plan. So, next slide, please. So a little background here, back in February of 2024, we initiated this process with the short-term plan that is in place on the Wharf and with direction to also start looking into a long-term plan. The short-term plan is in place, and then in fall of last year, we started a contract with Fuse Architecture, who's here tonight, they'll be presenting as well. And then Fuse worked for, throughout the winter, putting together concepts for the Wharf, and then in March of this year, we came to city council with six concepts, and the council said, let's clean these up a bit, add one more concept of keeping what's out there, out there, just as it is today, and we could proceed with our public output, so, input, sorry. So during the month of May, it was our public input month. We went to all the different stakeholder groups, which I'll talk about the findings there. We had a survey published for the entire month, and then we also had a community meeting at New Brighton Middle School. Next slide. So the concepts, I think everyone's pretty familiar with them, but they range from open space to permanent structures as they were in the Wharf before, and looking at mobile vendors within option two. Number three was the existing fishing concession as it is today. Number four was a larger fishing concession to enclose the boats and have an area for doing, maintaining the boats as well. Option five was a fishing concession with mobile vendors, and six was more of a marketplace idea, as well as a fishing concession, and seven was looking at what we had out there before. So I'm going to present on the findings of the stakeholder groups, and then Fuse will come up and present on the findings of the survey work, as well as the community meeting we had. So I want to say thank you to all the stakeholder groups that are listed on this slide. We've got incredible volunteers in this city, and everyone, I'm so impressed to go to all the different meetings and learn from everyone, the different perspectives. So next slide, please. So the common themes that were heard was overwhelmingly, we heard, keep fishing on the Wharf, keep our hoist, and it's a historic cultural recreational use, and, you know, I'm reminded of that every time I go out there, even in seems not great weather, there's people out there fishing, and it was yesterday I was out there, and I couldn't believe how many little kids were out there fishing while the junior guards were all swimming around. So second was broad support for a second bathroom and also the lifeguard station. So that was supported. And then there was a mix of like conditional support for the mobile vendors, people were interested in it. It was broken up between two different concepts. So when you look at the two concepts and bring those numbers together, it was a pretty significant portion of public response. But they cautioned about oversaturating, having too many mobile vendors out there, where we don't want to compete with our village businesses, and also support maybe a pilot startup of one or two, don't go too big too soon. So, next. And then there were concerns related to the larger permanent structures. I think it was our planning commission as well, I think this brought up at most of the stakeholder meetings, but our, the Commission on the Environment, if you read through their comments, had a lot of comments about thinking about climate and vulnerability on our Wharf, as well as, there were also concerns about height and massing and viewing, view obstructions. We heard those from the local sea web group, as well as our planning commission and several other groups. So really calling for modest buildings that are visually compatible. And then also a call for additional economic and climate analysis, and this came primarily from our Commission on the Environment and our Planning Commission. There was a lot of conversations around the seasonality of the Wharf and whether or not businesses could really survive out there, and then again, the climate impacts and big storm events. The value in open space and public access. One of the funnest stakeholder groups I met with was the student council at New Brighton, and as we went through the concepts they would bring up, they brought up the fact that they love being in the village, it's full of energy, there's so much going on, but when they go out to the Wharf, they want, they love the peace and quiet, and just that experience of just being able to take in the views and it's more relaxed atmosphere. So, and that came up with a lot of our different groups, and so just avoiding overcrowding, really thinking how we program that space, maintaining the peaceful views and walkability, and then, yeah, just really thinking about as we start to program it, what we do put out there, maintaining just that value in open space. And then some miscellaneous practical design considerations. There's some electrical infrastructure that needs to be addressed and will be addressed in the future, trash and waste management, how we deal with that, thinking about deliveries and maintenance, and then the level decking on the Wharf and accessibility, and then also just great ideas about historic character, future public art on the Wharf, interpretive elements, and just the items to come, the bronze fish that will be a pathway along the Wharf, and then really involving the museum with the content. So with that, that's the big, big items and common themes that we heard from our stakeholder groups, and I will invite, I think, Dan Townsend, next, from Fuse Architecture. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Dan Townsend. I'm with Fuse. My project team here is Dan Gomez and Courtney Christensen, sitting behind me here, and we're pleased to give you the results of the public outreach and the other event that we had, the public meeting. I can go to the next slide. Some key takeaways, there's a lot of information. We gathered a lot of information, we organized it the best we could, but I'll just go through the key points that we found here for everyone to take note of. There was 1,067 survey respondents, that was key, of which 499 of them were Capitola residents. We thought that was significant and worth noting. Go ahead, next slide. Seven options, as Katie mentioned. You guys have, you're familiar with the seven options. You can see the bar graphs down at the bottom. Option seven, which is permanent structures, largely what we had before with the addition of lifeguard station and the bathroom that wasn't there before. That was the largest section of the vote, with option six falling in second place. Very close. Thank you. Next slide. And this is just a reminder, we just are showing the, the documents that we prepared for these two options that were the most favorable. Option number six, the flexible, open market space idea, and we can move now to the next What, and these are the key, key takeaways for this one, that's 21% of the vote, and most people that we, we heard... And this is just a reminder, we just are showing the, the documents that we prepared for, these two options that were the most favorable. Option number six, the flexible, open market space idea. And we can move now to the next slide. What, and these are the key, key takeaways for this one, that's 21% of the vote. And most people that we, we heard talking at the public outreach meeting, the one in New Brighton, the ones that were interested in option six mostly liked the idea of the flexible market space. That was their, that was their key. There was some discussion in most of the options about the stage, whether the stage is a good idea or not. But those are, those are some of the key takeaways there. Next slide, please. Option number seven, permanent structures. Like I said, largely what we had there before with the addition of the bathroom, which all of the options had a bathroom and the lifeguard station, so it looked similar to what we had before, with a larger, larger fishing concession area and a full restaurant. Next slide. This was 42% of the vote. We could call that a, a big winner, a big driver for, for votes. What they liked, mostly what we heard from the public is they liked what was out there before and they wanted to see that again. There's a lot of discussion about the rooftop deck on the former restaurants. The bathroom lifeguard station obviously was the same in all the options, everybody liked that. Again, discussion about the stage and planters. Many of the schemes had benches and planters. There's some question about whether planters were a good idea out on the wharf. Go ahead to the next slide. Key takeaways, over a thousand people, significant support for permanent structures. Next slide. As Katie mentioned, there was some support for mobile vendors. It was more of a, it caused a lot of discussion, the mobile vendors, what would it be? Would there be too many? How would the city manage them? That kind of thing. But there was a, a good amount of discussion about mobile vendors and the idea for that. The least popular option was option number four. 3% of the vote was for option number four. We just thought that was worth taking note of and that was just a fishing concession only and largely what we have out there now. Next slide, please. Overall support, bathrooms, fishing, lifeguard station, personal rescue craft, shade structures. There was a lot of discussion about shade structures, were, really weren't included in any of our options, but there was, we found that was common with a lot of people, is some shade. Next slide, thank you. That was good. Number five there. The biggest concerns were, as you can imagine, cost and frequent storms. And what would happen with, if we built permanent structures out there, what are the potential downfalls of that during storm events? Next slide. During our community meeting at New Brighton, what we did is we presented all seven ideas and we offered the public to stand at the end and gravitate towards the option they liked in a physical area. The response was very, it mirrored the survey results. Most people gravitated towards options seven and six. There was, maybe a few were a little bit nervous to be the only one at an option and they gravitated, we don't know, but it, it seemed to be very similar to the survey results. We also offered the public to, on trace paper, write down their notes, anything that they thought was important to them. We have all of those notes on file, we're not going to show them all to you, but these are just, this is how graphically it was represented. The public seemed to like that idea to write down their, their comment. Next slide, please. And some sketches, as you've seen there. Option six and seven, greatest support, we had, I, I feel like in our team felt like we, we got all of the response that we needed to move forward and to provide a recommendation for council. Next slide, please. Okay. What do we recommend? Based on the data that we received, we've studied just about everything that, well, everything that came in. There was public comment on the surveys, there was written notes. We recommend that council approve a hybrid of options six and seven. Seven again, biggest support, six very close. We feel that six and seven, the hybrid of the two, will provide more flexibility and will be economically feasible approach that's going to be, going to allow for public and private partnerships that will allow for, it will be the best chance for us to move forward with these permanent structures, with that flexible idea and the economic feasibility of it. That's our recommendation. If you have any other questions, we're here.
Thank you. Welcome.
And I'll, I'll just go into the next steps. And so the next steps would be for the development of the final wharf master plan. And with that, it would include a flexible site layout and description of uses and programmed areas, conceptual massing and renderings, updated cost estimates, and also looking at what, what applicable permits are needed and sequel review. That would come back to you in the fall. And from there, we would have a, have you adopt a wharf master plan. And the purpose behind that, where we're looking for a public, private partnership with this, we would utilize that wharf master plan within a future request for proposals for, looking for interested partners. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. And our recommendation tonight is to...
Thank you. We can start with questions on this side.
So when we talk about having a flexible plan, are we looking at the option of being able to build this in phases if there's not money to do whatever the master plan is all at once? I mean, is that going to be part of the flexibility?
So with the flexibility between, with, with the ideas of a marketplace, a restaurant, and fishing concession, I think the outcome of that could be to phase, to phase the project. So, that could be built into it with the flexibility.
And I was wondering, there's sort of a shed structure at the very entrance to the wharf. I noticed it the other day when I was out there. I think it covers up a utility panel or something like that. I mean, I think the entrance to our wharf is so nice right now, except for that one little eyesore there. So I'm wondering if it's possible to add that into our program or if it's too late for that?
No, this is the time to bring up anything that you would like included. So we can definitely address that.
And, and the only other request I would have is, when we get close to having the hearing in the fall, I think it would be great if the buildings could be marked on the wharf so people can see where they're going to go and how much space they're going to, to occupy, you know, and exactly what's going to happen. And I don't know if you do that with chalk or tape, but I'm certain Fuse can figure out some way to do it. And if, if we're gonna do a two-story building, I don't think we need to do a whole flag thing all around the top, but it would be nice maybe to have one pole or something that indicates how high the, the two-story parts of the building would be. So some of us have a hard time visualizing all of that without some aids to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just curious if we could get like a little rundown of what a public-private partnership might look like for the city, just so that everybody's kind of on the same page.
So, this is something the city hasn't done before, at least not in, I think the city attempted to do it at the Rispin Mansion maybe 20 years ago, but that didn't end up working out. So the city of Santa Cruz is probably an analogy, or I believe the wharf district did this relatively recently. And in that situation, essentially what this, the public agency did was put out to the private sector that said, we have some space available for a building like this. And you can put whatever constraints you want to do, that's sort of the purpose of the wharf master plan here, is to identify what kinds of uses we would envision would be allowed in the building. And then look for proposals from a private sector developer who says, I'm willing to do this, I will need a 40-year term to, you know, make a return on my investment. And then in addition, I will give the city 3% of gross revenue. That's, I think, a pretty relatively typical term on the Santa Cruz wharf. So, the idea I think behind like a flexible master plan here is that, you may recall that I think the difference in cost between options six and seven, I think seven may have doubled the cost of six. So the economics of it, I'm sure, are quite different for private sector investor. And so trying to put something together that's a little bit flexible, that's something that we can all exceptionally live with, and then see what kind of proposals we get. And hopefully we get a lot of interest and the council has the opportunity to weigh different types of proposals that have different strengths and weaknesses. We may not get any proposals, that's certainly an option as well. And in that case, I think we probably need to take a step back and take a look at some of the other options and what might be financially feasible for the city to pursue on its own.
Great, thank you. That was my only question. Thanks, Katie.
Take it to this side.
Given that a quarter of the survey participants supported the idea of mobile vendors, will we be able to add this as an option in our wharf master plan for more flexibility in case, you know, like Jamie says, there is no private-public partnership?
So I think if, if we put out this RFP and it was for the flexible option six, seven hybrid, and it did not work out, then I think we would, I would come back to the city council and ask if we could come up with a different alternative and update the wharf master plan. And I think your exact point on that, we would come back with more of a mobile vendor recommendation. But, and I think we would incorporate the feedback that we got regarding mobile vendors as they need to be lightweight, it's, we really don't want them to compete with the, the village merchants and also making sure that it's not something that we're having, rotating all the time because it becomes a burden and having set vendors out there. So yeah, I think that would be Plan B.
Do we have an interim plan while we wait for the wharf master plan, long-term plan?
So currently, the uses out on the wharf, I believe those leases go through the end of this year, so that's something we would be bringing back to you to discuss.
Okay. I just have one other question. If a permanent structure were to be in place, what would the maintenance cost be for the city and the cost of additional services like trash and waste and...
So that would be part of this master plan, we'd be bringing back the costs for you and a clear understanding of that. Thanks, Katie.
Again, Katie, thank you and thank you to both the Dans and also Courtney. Continue to be impressed with your guys' outreach that you're giving to the community. Every time I'm out talking to somebody, it's always positive and everybody's very excited about the process. So thank you for that. Just echoing a comment from council member Westman regarding the entrance to the wharf, I refute, I refer to it as a KOA campground sign. But the, the signage and the entrance to the wharf definitely, I feel, should have been addressed in the first phase of construction, but I know it just where the budget was and everything. So hopefully that can really offset the entrance gates to the wharf that are really amazing and everything. So hopefully that gets taken care of in this as a very much, I think, a priority. Let's see, the next thing, you know, some of the comments that were made that I heard from the, the community, but also some of the outreach that you mentioned, that people had concerns about the stability of the wharf and long-term and stuff like that. And I thought the consultant, who was a structural engineer, gave a good presentation and talked about, you know, his view of the integrity of the wharf. Was that shared with these other committees? And, and if it, you know, it's always a concern, it's always going to be a risk, but I thought a lot of people that came into that, as I read the crowd that night at New Brighton, a lot of people came in with those concerns and it seemed like their, those comments were put to rest a little bit. And I was just wondering if we can continue to, continue with that outreach to make sure people hear that.
Yes. So I will say for the stakeholders, I did not have the structural engineers attend those meetings with me, but I think right now would be a great time to educate folks on that as well.
Sure, I can do my best to, to share with you what Brad Porter with Moffett Nickel shared with the public at, at the New Brighton meeting. He, he did speak fairly well about the, he, or gave us information about the existing condition of the wharf. His company had the contract to repair the wharf. He expressed that he felt the wharf in its current condition is in very good shape and that he wasn't really concerned with option one through seven, as far as one being worse for the wharf or one being better for the wharf. He expressed that his concerns are more with live load or the load of humans on, on the wharf rather than buildings themselves or any other structures or moving, movable objects like mobile vendors were more of a concern to him. But he just expressed that whatever we propose, he will work to, to help us as a consultant to make sure that that will withstand whatever comes our way.
And I thought I also heard that the possibility even that a main structure out there might even help to add some stability to the wharf?
Yeah, he, he did mention that, yes, yes.
Great. So I just think that's key, Katie, if we do that back up, reach back out to, you know, the environmental commission and stuff, that they, they know that that's been talked about and being addressed. I think that's a big deal and I think that's something we should focus on. And then I just think we need to highlight to the community because sometimes these things start to go and everybody thinks we're going to be doing six and seven. I mean, if we are unsuccessful with the RFP process and there's not a vendor, I mean, that's going to be, that'd be a large challenge for our city to take that kind of expense on. So that, just that, that's, you know, I think Jamie did a, a lot of that job that night in highlighting, you know, Capitola, what we're about and taking challenges and, you know, setting a goal high and then achieving it. And so I think that's important to have that for the wharf, but to know that, you know, that's not just, if we come out here tonight or something, that's where the direction of the council goes that, you know, that's automatic. And so I think it's important. The other thing was just a couple of small things. Is there any updates that we could give back to the community, especially who donated on the bike racks and the bronze elements and then all those, also the no edge signage that's supposed to be on the wharf that we could kind of plead, I think, to phase one?
Sure. So I know the bike racks have been ordered and they were upgraded from the original, they're going to be waves, so they'll fit right in. The bronze fish, I believe, are in production and should be installed this summer. And then what was the last?
The Noah, the Noah signage that it's going to be...
And I believe that's happening soon, like definitely this summer, but I think sooner rather than...
Next two weeks.
The next two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Um, that's all I have. Oh, I just have one other follow-up question and maybe, Dan, sorry to ask you, come back up here. If, if actually option seven happened, you know, and it was a two-story with the stage on top, would that automatically kick in for ADA that there'd have to be an elevator out there for ADA accessibility?
There would. Yeah, we'd need ADA accessibility.
And is that a big challenge?
Part of the discussion isn't necessarily that it's two stories with a stage on top that the second story would be the stage.
Right. Yeah. And then just...
Rooftop deck.
Just with elevator on the wharf or something like that, just saltwater intrusion, stuff like that, is that common practice that you've seen elevators like on wharfs like that out there?
For ADA accessibility, but I would say is it, it's common when it's required, but it's, yeah, it's not common to have two-story structures from, from what we've seen on wharfs, but there are some and they do have elevators. Saltwater intrusion and anything metal is always a concern, but marine-grade stainless steel is likely going to be the choice, but that'll be in the next phase.
Perfect. Thank you, Swen.
Thank you. I have no questions, I have comments that I'll wait for later. That'll bring us to public comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Clark and council members. Heidi Kellison, representing Sea Web, the Capitola Wharf Enhancement Project. We just wanted to thank you for the process that was very robust. Thank you to the city, thank you to Fuse. The participation was excellent. I think people felt welcomed, they felt encouraged, and that kind of a process can only make our decision-making better. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Locke and my husband and I own property that overlook the wharf, so we're very interested in what happens with the wharf. And as other speakers have mentioned, a lot of great work has been done in thinking about the future. I would encourage, like encourage the council to consider moving forward as quickly as possible with some of the items that are in all of these plans, that I think have been in the past plans as well, especially a restroom. in the past plans as well, especially a restroom on the end of the Wharf. For those of us that go fishing out there, it'd be nice to have a restroom. Doesn't have to be one that costs the same as a new house. It could be a lot more basic, but restrooms at the end of the Wharf would be great. The other thing is the lifeguard station. Again, I think it's been in the plans for some time, very necessary for the safety of the area. We see jet skis coming from Santa Cruz to help with water rescue. That's a long trip to make in order to accommodate those people or needs. So it would be great if those two items could move forward as soon as possible versus waiting on what I think will be a long plan in terms of all the other elements. And then the other item is, we keep talking about a restaurant, which is great if that's what people want, et cetera. But what people really want right now is just some basic concessions. You know, when you're out there fishing, it'd be nice to be able to get a morning burrito or a hamburger or a hot dog in the afternoon, something very basic. So it doesn't have to be anything fancy, but considering something basic like a concession would be wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Edith Patencia. I feel representative for the Markel Carbon Unit here in the coverage of Monterey County, Santa Cruz County. So when the city invests in major capital projects like the Wharf, we have an opportunity to make sure that those public dollars create real value in the community. That starts by requiring contractors to pay extended wages and provide healthcare. That ensures workers can support their families to stay healthy and build a career, not just a job. Healthcare and fair wages are how we keep them here. A great example of responsible contractor is SSB, who's doing a community center over by J Street. They also participate in a apprenticeship program. If we care about quality of work, long-term sustainability, and real local impact, we must set the standard. Let's make sure our state's capital project benefit the community from the ground up. Thank you.
See, no further questions of the public? Or bring it back to council members for deliberation?
Again, just thank you for the process. I think it's a great plan to look at moving forward. I don't have any additional questions or anything. I just, again, appreciate the community's outreach and the process, which I think is so important. And I like to see the direction we're going, and I'd love to hear the other comments from my other councilmembers.
Thank you for the great work. I have no other comments.
Yes, thanks, Katie. Thank you, Fuse and staff. I'm definitely hearing that the restrooms would be great. I don't know if that would be part of a step-by-step flexible process. And then just, I think Recreation has done a really good job sort of utilizing what we have right now, and I think if there's any other expansion on that, that is possible to come out while we're going through the process. I'm open to that as well. But I'm really excited to move forward, and I hope we can maybe get some good feedback from some private people or see what else comes to us. I think it's a really unique, unique place to be, but thanks for all the work, and thanks for the public too, for all your input.
Well, I agree with everyone. I think it's been a great public process, and we got a lot of people to participate in it. And I actually think the idea of having some sort of temporary hot dog or hamburger stand or something on the Wharf sometime soon would be a good one. While we want to see this go forward, we all know that projects like this are going to take a bit of time, and it's not going to happen soon. So maybe we could look into the idea of, you know, having one, something out there that could work for temporary food stand. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I agree with everybody. I think we need to move quickly on the restrooms, maybe the public safety lifeguard tower, and as we go on stages, try to do things as quickly as we can and keep it moving. So thank you very much. With that, I'll be looking for a motion.
Move the recommended action. I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brings up to item C, fiscal year 2025-26 salary schedule.
Mayor, I'll recuse myself for this item as I have a conflict, and so I'll be stepping out and come back when you're ready.
Thank you, Will. We'll make sure to get you when we need you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This should be a brief presentation. As you know, I'll just wait for you to be able to see our slides, but as you know, excuse me, every year, you adopt a resolution that establishes the current salary schedule for each position and class of permanent regular city employees. So as you are also aware, due to your approval of various memorandum of understandings about a year ago, the city has existing agreements with our employee groups, including our management and city manager positions, and they do require cost of living adjustments and healthcare contribution increases starting this coming month in July. They're outlined here on the screen in front of you, what those, the summary of what those adjustments will be. And so the recommendation this evening is for you to, I believe, approve a resolution with the attached salary schedule, which is consistent with the existing employee labor agreements. And I'm available for any questions, should you have some. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions? Start on this side.
I have none.
Remarkable, I have none either.
Thank you.
That'll bring us out to public comment. Seeing none, bring it back for council deliberation.
I can move the resolution authorizing the fiscal year 25-26 annual salary adjustment consistent with the existing employee labor agreements.
I second that.
Great, we have a first and a second, but I'd like to say quickly, this is something that the council worked on, and especially staff, so good work. First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, compliance with Assembly Bill 2561, Government Code Section 3502.3, Regarding Vacancies, Recruitment, and Retention Efforts.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So that is something I'll be reporting out on as well, so I'm going to stick with you a bit longer here. So this is a new report that you can expect annually. It's based on the calendar year, so just keep that in mind as I'm presenting that all of this data and information is regarding calendar year 2024. As you know, we're six months into 2025, yikes, but this is about last year. So AB 2561, Assembly Bill, is a new California state law that went into effect January 1st of this year. Cities all across the state are presenting these reports as required. I believe this was kind of developed out of what we saw during the pandemic, which was a lot of retirements, a lot of people moving on from service, and hiring freezes. And so this report is about vacancies, retention, and recruitment efforts. So there's three specific requirements. This is also, I just want to say, the first year cities have had to comply, and so we're really, we've relied on our legal experts, but we are kind of all figuring this out together to make sure we're in compliance. So it was fun to pull up this information together for you. It's not something we generally get to speak about in a public meeting, so thank you for listening. The three requirements are a report out on vacancies by percentage per bargaining unit. So there's going to be more information to follow this, but just briefly, we have our two represented bargaining units here in Capitola. The percentage of vacancies are listed here on the screen, again, for 2024 calendar year. Second is that employee organizations, so those bargaining units, are allowed to participate. This was offered. It was declined. I'm proud of the relationship I have with the two bargaining units, so they didn't seem to need to present, although they were allowed to, and it was offered to them. And the third requirement is only if the city has 20% or more of a vacancy rate for either or any of their bargaining units, which I'm proud to say we do not have, because, as you can see, we're way, way, way lower than that 20% threshold. And I believe if you do reach that, there's just additional reporting required to show that the city is actively trying to fill those vacancies. So that is really the point of this report. So in Capitola, about 60% of your employees are a part of a represented bargaining unit. That is our Association of Capitola Employees. Those are most of our hourly, regular employees. We have 27 people in that group. And then our Police Officers Association, which we have 23 employees in. And you'll notice, while there's about 12 different roles that make up ACE, we call it ACE, A-C-E, only five positions, two of those being police officer, officer and trainee, are in the POA. So it's almost the same amount of people, but it's really only a few specific jobs, which is fascinating. Other employees include mid-management, confidential, our captains, and our management team. So keep in mind that we budget, you, excuse me, budget about 70 FTEs, that's a full-time equivalent position. And again, I'm mostly talking about regular employees, not our temporary workforce. So moving on, I'm going to call out some numbers here. We had one Police Officer Association vacancy, which did remain the entire calendar year, the entire year citywide, so regardless of bargaining unit, we never had more than three vacancies at a time. We generally are able to fill a vacancy within about a month. We experienced seven separations over 2024, and we hired six new people. Additionally, we had four internal promotions, which was very exciting for, I think, most of the people for our whole city. So our average vacancies, if you look at it by position, like think about a human person, for ACE is less than one over the whole year, and for the POA is about one and a half over the year. When you look at a vacancy rate, that's basically talking about how many vacancies per budgeted positions in that group. So that's why there's a percentage listing on your screen. So just to give our recruitment team, which is very small, it's pretty much a person, one person, our wonderful HR analyst, Renee, who's here tonight, we received over 1,000 applications in one year. So I'm really proud to say that Capitola doesn't seem to have a problem that I hear other organizations discussing, which is that they can't get people to want to work for them. We don't really have that problem that I've seen, which is really wonderful. Like I mentioned, we filled seven regular positions. And just to mention, because it's actually more work than that even, 26% of all of our recruitment is temporary employees that fill about eight positions, generally speaking for our recreation department, but occasionally for other roles. So let's talk about recruitment. We have really streamlined this process, even though it looks like there's a lot of steps up on your screen. We worked really hard, I think, kind of coming out of the pandemic to address these vacancies. We had more than I think we'd seen in maybe 10 years or more in about '21, '22, and the team got together and thought, okay, how can we fill these faster? And so we are no longer waiting until someone has their last day to start posting a job. We're trying to be more efficient and get people working for the city as fast as we can. So like I said, it takes about a month to hire a non-sworn employee, as our mayor, I'm sure, is aware. Sworn background investigations take a little longer. I've been told it could be up to three months, but it really depends on the person. Entry-level positions here at the city, we get hundreds of applications for, you know, our front desk roles, for our maintenance worker positions, which, again, is a really amazing position to be in. And one other thing that I just wanted to call out is that any unsuccessful candidate receives a personal no-think-you note. We're trying really hard to make every point of contact with applicants positive, and that continues through to the hire process when we onboard folks as well. So to point out why I think that matters, we've had several employees who are amazing at what they do, try for a certain job, not succeed, and then apply for something else because they want to work here and be hired and have fit in great and have been wonderful hires. So I think that says a lot about our recruitment practices and our team. And retention, again, this is required by the report, I'm not just bragging, everybody, just want to point that out. Our retention efforts here at the city, we have some new policies, like our flexible remote work policy, our down payment assistance program, which was kind of modified about a year and a half ago. We do try to keep budget for training, conference attendance, so that our current employees can learn and grow in their roles and serve the city in the best way that they can. Our parking permits, believe it or not, that's a really, that's a great thing for employees to know that they have somewhere to park when they get here in the morning. We have a matching program for our retirement 457 accounts, amazing community support here in Capitola, I've seen in a number of ways, but certainly with the passage of Measure Y, a last election cycle, our seasonal events for employees, and a monthly birthday celebration. So I think that brings me to the end of the report. I have no recommendation, I can answer questions, but really, you just need to accept this report. It's a formal public hearing as required by the new amendment to the Brown Act. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Council questions?
No questions, just a comment. I thought it was pretty mind-blowing when I saw the number of thousand, over 1,000 applicants, and so just a shout-out to Renee in the HR department, or Renee, as we call it, for what she does and how she processes that. And then just, I think, and I appreciate you highlighting the Measure Y, I think, again, the community stepping forward with the additional sales tax to provide salaries that are attractive, and it'd be interesting to see, you know, these numbers look great, but what do they look like next year? Because we're more competitive, so again, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Great, no other questions. We will bring it to public comment. No public comment, back for deliberation.
Just want to say thank you for the report, and it was interesting to hear. I think we just accept it, we don't need to make any kind of motion.
Great, thank you. It'll be accepted.
Thank you very much.
That'll bring us to item E, city-owned property leasing policy. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to put this off to a future city council meeting. I think we had some projects coming up that might have an effect on it, so I'd like to start off with a motion to withhold this until a future city council meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
You have to go to public comment, I think.
I'm sorry, I skipped one. Didn't I ask for public comment? Oh, that was the one before. I'm going to take a step back and ask for any public comment. See, no public comment. Bring us to item F, fiscal year 2025-26 operating budget and capital improvement program.
I could say good evening now, Mayor and Council. I think I have the next three items for you, starting off with fiscal year 25-26 budget. Next slide. So just to kind of recap our process, the proposed budget was distributed on May 2nd. The FAC held special meetings on May 13th and 20th to review the budget, and also reviewed the budget again during the June 17th, the regular meeting. City Council, you held two special meetings, May 15th and 29th, and then on the 29th, gave direction to return this evening for adoption. Next slide, please. And so as a reminder, we're maintaining an estimated ending balance of 603,000. 500,000 is our normal target fund balance, 100,000 for the employee down payment assistance program that Chloe had just mentioned, and then 3,000 undesignated. We're also, during the last council meeting on May 29th, a special meeting, we are utilizing $150,000 of general fund resources for city council goals, which include the flashing crosswalk on Stockton Avenue, Espalade Park, starting to get a project going there, Park Avenue, the remaining funding for that part project, some seed money for a playground at Monterey Park, and then $20,000 for a time and material economic development contract. And that's a really busy slide. economic development contract. And that's a really busy slide, a lot of administrative updates, um, primarily to goals, um, city council goals, uh, review, I think it was brought up again tonight, reviewing the code of conduct and making any necessary changes. And the city attorney's office to review the PRA process and then see if there's any recommendations there to, um, maybe reduce costs or streamline that. City manager's department to goals to include educational opportunities, and that's going to be a tabling event during one of the Twilight concerts. Um, also in the city manager economic development goal to include, we had listed the Capitola Mall. Um, I think it was also brought up, the Red Tree property, as well as the Billy Village Theater property. Um, the police department added a goal for seeking a department adjusted justice tobacco grant. And then finally rebranding the community development department to the building, planning and economic development department. Next slide, please. Um, on the capital improvement program, we have seven active projects totaling around $11 million. We're, uh, for this year, the only, um, recommended appropriation is our Measure D and, which is the RTC money and the SB1 state money for the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act funds totaling 656,000. And we're recommending to program that. That, those funds normally go into pavement management, so we're recommending to utilize those funds for the 41st Avenue pavement multimodal project. Um, also the city council, the five projects I mentioned a couple of slides ago. And we also still have one, um, of the storm damage, the Noble Gulch outlet into SoCal Creek. FEMA is still kind of working through that one and trying to scope that one out. So we don't have that in the, um, seven active projects, but it's one we're still tracking from the storms about a year and a half ago. Next slide. Um, in mid-year budget, I think we'll be able to get this done at late, the second February meeting. I was looking at the sales tax calendar. So sometimes we push into March, but I think this year we'll get it done earlier. We'll be watching, um, sales tax volatility around the national economy, which seems to be kind of stabilizing a little bit, at least this week. So hopefully that trend continues. And then we'll also be looking at our, uh, other key revenue sources, TOTs, cannabis tax, building permits, and also Measure Y. We'll be, we're going to be doing, um, quarterly reports. So this will be the second. We'll do one for a quarter that ends in September, and then this will be the second one for the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, um, we're always making sure that expenditure or monitoring those expenditures are tracking on budget and looking for possible cost savings. And then once we go through that kind of, um, evaluation of revenues, any adjustments that we need for that. Can I add more slides? I know. I think that's just my last slide. Please. Um, we also, um, are doing a reorganization that we talked about during the, um, May 15th or 16th special meeting, whatever day that was, um, with HR and IT coming into admin services or into finance and creating admin services and then, um, expanding the role of the assistant city manager, assistant to the city manager into more, uh, public outreach and, um, public outreach and communications. So there's a couple of job descriptions that are getting amended. The administrative services director job description already existed from an employee several years ago. So we just tweaked that to kind of fit what we're doing. And we pulled out the art and cultural, which is now with community service and recreation. Museum stays with the assistant to the city manager and risk management. And then again, on the assistant to the city manager, it's an existing job description we just updated to increase the level of support in the overall, overall administration of city, which is the goals, policies and procedures, planning, organizing, directing and coordinating the public outreach initiatives and communication of public information and maintaining, and then also still maintains oversight over the museum, risk management and probably labor negotiations. So in summary, our general fund this year, the next three years is structurally balanced, utilizing Measure Y funding. However, beyond fiscal year 28, '29, right now we're showing an imbalanced budget primarily due to CalPERS UAL. There's a lot of moving pieces that could happen over the next three years. Increased revenues, we're tracking a couple of economic development things, as well as CalPERS had a good year last year, so hopefully those numbers come down. Um, our reserves, again, are, are below our target levels, but we're still awaiting some reimbursements from FEMA and CALOES on the Worf project. So we'll plan to utilize those reimbursements to bring the reserves up. Um, again, we'll be tracking, um, our general fund revenues closely as things change in the, at the national level. I think I've already mentioned all of those. Oh, parking was one that I don't think I had on the other slide. And then, um, on the general fund, we're, uh, maintaining high service levels while continuing to evaluate our contract services, looking for places to cut costs. And our recommended action tonight is to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 25, '26 operating budget and capital improvement program and approve the new job descriptions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll start with questions over here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Jim, thank you again to you and your staff. Um, I know I might have been one of the council members asking you many questions during the process. And uh, thank you very much for the education. Be my first show on council. Um, I think it's something that we should, um, I guess celebrate somewhat. If you read, if you listen to the news and other cities and counties with the cuts that they're having to make, their severe school districts and stuff, it's nice that we're in a position this year, again, of being balanced. But, you know, we have to keep our eye on what things are going to look like. You know, maybe this, next year's okay, but the third year out. So, um, I think we're very lucky where we sit today with that. But, um, you know, as the ongoing, um, uh, budget to evaluate cost saving measures throughout the year, I think will be very important. Um, with that, um, I have a, a question regarding the budget. Um, and do we have any update yet? And I hate to be the person always bringing this up on the community grant yet for, um, Jade Street?
Oh, the community development block grant?
Yes.
I have not heard anything.
We do have a little bit of a bias. We, we haven't received final notification about it yet. Uh, we do have a positive indication from their offices that we'll be talking about with the, with the treasure cove item later. We can talk about it now if you'd like.
Uh, I, my only thing would just be, um, with this, we have, are approving the CIP budget. Um, and so I, I was, two items are kind of interconnected. I would just propose that we, you know, may approve the budget, but put a hold on spending any CIP money. If we don't get that grant, would have to look at how we're going to backfill some other obligations that we made. So, um, I'll talk to the rest of the council about how they would like to see it, but, um, approve it and not enter, uh, into any spending of any of those funds, because we might need to use those funds to help, uh, you know, over at Jade Street Park. So, um, then wherever is the correct time to talk about that, but I'd like to just make sure that's noted. Um, and, um, just the others, one just small minor item, um, that looks like we're going to be setting up a table for outreach, um, at the, maybe, uh, music in the park or something like that. Just listened to this council, uh, a community member, Joe showed up. I didn't know if there's opportunity, can we put up a table in the lobby, you know, um, on city council meeting nights or planning commission nights with some information, you know, somebody maybe just shows up as he, a person like him walking out the door, that he could see the openings and something like that. And, you know, what other things are coming up for future leadership, uh, possibilities? And just an idea I came up with, which is not connected to the budget, but is one of the things that I've just noted as, um, that we're going to have a table out and to try and do better community outreach. So, um, but just, um, maybe you could elaborate on what your thoughts were about, um, the additional funding from the grant stuff would be helpful for me.
Yeah. Councilor Jensen, I think the, I think what you're suggesting is, is that the $150,000 that we allocated into projects this year, that we don't spend it the first couple of weeks of the fiscal year. Uh, I think that's a very reasonable request because I do think if this, we're confident the CDBG grant is going to come through, but until we have a signed contract, we don't have the money. So I do think that that holding for the first couple, couple of weeks, hopefully just, you know, a few week or two more, um, but not spending it right away until we get confirmation about that. Because if we don't get the CDBG grant, we are going to have to make some hard choices. We may have to go back and look at those projects and decide, you know, which ones of them, um, which ones of them we can keep and which ones we would need to move into the project. So I think that that's a reasonable request or suggestion. And, uh, yeah.
And so when you, uh, and I, I've been just, um, trying to understand the process, if that does happen and there was a whole pack of funds, then we'd come back and reevaluate the whole budget on where we'd find the offset. Um, wanting for the, uh, like we're backfilling the, the, like the co-project for the playground?
If we end up in a situation where we don't get the CDBG funding, I think, as I mentioned before, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And what we would do is, is the public works team, I think, would look through the playground project, work with the friends on what the obligations were, what the commitments were made to the great, the donors of the project, uh, figure out what the project cost is going to be. And then staff would come back with maybe a couple of different options about how we could close that grant.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Well, what would be the timeline on that? Would it be within the next month, next couple of weeks?
My understanding is the timeline would be this summer. So it's either the July meeting or the August meeting.
Think maybe we'd have to have a special meeting for it or just, just agenda it, I guess.
I'd leave that to the public works director. Do you have any feedback about the timing?
Good evening again. Um, so we've been anticipating a formal agreement with HCD for a couple of months now. So really it could be any day. We did get indication from them that we are allowed to bid the project. It'd be very unlikely that they would allow us to bid the project if they did not intend, um, moving forward with the funds. I will say, and I will go into this later with the treasure, or the Jade Street item at the end of the meeting. If for some reason we were delayed and we did not get these funds, the next opportunity to bid the treasure code projects will really wouldn't be until January, just weather-wise. So that gives us a good amount of time to kind of determine, to reimagine the project and determine what we would do in the long run.
Thank you. That's hopeful.
I think being the forever optimist, given we're number one on that grant cycle, I have no doubt we're going to get that money. So let's move it along.
Other questions?
No, I, I think I now understand the shortfall in, in the payment if we don't get the grant. But, um, you know, after going through everything, it seems like we're not committed, uh, in any way to make up that difference with general fund money. We do have the option of looking at the project itself and seeing if there's something that can be eliminated in there. Um, or working with the, um, people who made the donations to see if we can get more money, uh, working with the friends of the park to see how that's going to sort itself out. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful in the end that, um, it's not going to be a problem at all.
Other questions? Great. Take us to public comment. Seeing no public comment, bring it back for deliberation and a motion.
I move the recommended action. May I do a friendly amendment and just state that we won't release the 150 until we have documents signed? Sure.
Do we need any other verbiage for that, Madam Clerk?
So to clarify, the motion is to adopt, um, the proposed resolution with an amendment to not release $150,000 until the CDBG grant is announced. Is that correct?
One nuance that I just remembered is that $60,000 of the 150 is for the Park Avenue traffic calming project, which we were going to change order into, we can, uh, pavement management contract for this year. So.
Well, I don't want to disrupt that. Um.
That's what I was thinking is that, cause that money is ready to go out the door. And I think that's a project everyone is committed to.
Okay. But we just let the motion stand.
I should have mentioned that earlier.
It's fine. But we just let the motion stand and approve the recommended action. All right. I'll second it.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Jensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Orvok?
Aye.
Councilmember Westman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion passes. Raise us to item G, fiscal year 2025, '26 bail schedule.
Good evening again. So this next item, as the mayor just mentioned, is, uh, the fiscal year 25, '26 bail schedule. Next slide, please. So, um, the bail schedule is, um, we just went through an update to align it with the municipal code. We have a lot of different things that require fines or, or result in fines within our municipal code. So we wanted to make sure that everything that we were doing aligned there. And we wanted, and we do that to ensure accuracy for our police department, as well as the Santa Cruz County Court database. Over making any changes does require a public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening. Next slide, please. And the purpose of the update again was to streamline the bail schedule, um, introducing a four-tier penalty system. If you've ever looked at our, the current bail schedule or the bail schedules at most cities, they don't make a whole lot of sense. There's just all kinds of random fines and random amounts that don't necessarily tie together. So we try, wanted to make something that, um, made more sense. Fines for similar types of infractions were, were similar rather than, you know, something being $5 versus $100 for a very similar thing. Um, we wanted to improve the clarity and accessibility. And so we have, um, a different way. We're going to post that on our website. So when folks are, when the public is looking at our bail schedule, it'll be broken down into these sections, hopefully that make more sense. And we also had our police department go through and make sure that we're consistent on what we're recommending and setting up this schedule that we're, um, consistent with our regional agencies within the tri-county area. Uh, most of these violations were grouped into the four penalty tiers of, I want to say it's 50, 100, 200 and 500, based on which infraction you're in or what type of infraction. Fines that are specified within our municipal code, where they name the actual bail amount for that fine are listed separately. I did also want to call out parking fines, um, increasing from 36 to $65. And that is compliant with state law and consistent with our other agencies in the area. And then just as a reminder, this is a base bail that we collect at the city. Um, the courts also add additional fees for the cost of going through the court process. Next slide, please. Um, fines, so the fines we based them on, um, if it was a fee, it was based on the cost of service delivery, which is the same as what we do on the fee schedule. On the fines, again, being consistent with our regional, um, partners and which makes that compliant with the Eighth Amendment, so that we're not, um, I'm drawing a blank on like excessive fines and veils for, for types of things. So we wanted to make sure that we're compliant with the Eighth Amendment. Um, there is no immediate fiscal impact. Um, some of these, like the parking one, if the fee goes from 36 to 65, I'm going to assume less people violate that. Have, have parks that we may see an actual slight increase in revenue with a decrease in parking citations as people, the $65 ticket might discourage more folks. Um, but we will review it during mid-year and we'll look at that. And if we need to amend, you know, then we'll do that at mid-year. So the recommended action is to conduct the, um, public hearing and adopt the resolution to repeal the previous resolution, 4233.1, and then the new resolution approving the fiscal year 25, '26 bail schedule. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions over here.
I just wanted to throw the question out there. This came up in the FAC meeting of how much of those ticket writing do we actually receive as the city versus what goes to another agency or the county?
The base bail is what we hold back at the city. And then the courts put additional fees and charges on there to cover the cost of the going through the court process.
So like the $65 ticket, we get the full?
We do keep the $65.
Okay. Thank you.
And that, I just had to kind of make sure that was the correct answer.
Yeah, that, yeah, cause I know that came up, but thank you. Appreciate it.
So will there be added fees to that $65 for the person who's paying the ticket?
Yes, there will be added fees from the court system.
So do we know how much in total the ticket is going to be?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
Well, I really appreciate all the work they did on this fee schedule. I unfortunately have a couple little nitpicky issues. And that is, I'm certainly prepared to approve it tonight, but next time, when it comes back next year, I hope that someone goes through and sort of makes certain we don't, we don't have items in here that we no longer enforce or want to have enforced. And one example I would use is that we have a fine in here for jumping off the wharf, and if we find every one of our junior guards that jump off the wharf, we'd be quite rich. And, you know, there's, there's no signs about not doing that, so I think there are a number of little issues like that that should be, you know, taken care of, you know, removing the requirement that you can't have an electric motor in SoCal Creek and some of those things, because times have changed, and we wanna change with them and not penalize people for things they're already doing, and it's not a problem.
We, we did do a review this time, but there's, I think this is gonna be kind of an ongoing annual process, and we'll kind of weed those ones out.
That'll be great, thank you.
I was a little reluctant to pull out too many without PD Wayne in first.
Dr. Bridge has been busy. There's some divers out there that got skills.
Great, that'll bring us to public comment. Seeing no public comment, that'll bring us back to deliberation from the council.
I'm willing to make a motion to approve of Resolution 4233.1 and approving the fiscal year 2025, '26 bail schedule.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. To clarify, just to clarify, the motion is to adopt a resolution repealing Resolution 4233.1, correct?
Okay, you are correct.
Thanks.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you for the clarification, motion passes. Bring us to item H, fiscal year 2025, '26, city fee schedule.
Last time for the fee schedule, so by way of background, we do this as an annual review of this fee schedule as part of our budget process. The current fee schedule was adopted November 14th of 2024, which is when we completed our fee study, which, under best management practices, is recommended that you do every five years, so this is kind of our first year into that. Our consultant did recommend that we do an annual review and increase fees, or at least consider increasing fees by the Consumer Price Index from the San Francisco Bay Area. Additionally, a lot of our fees have staff time tied to them, and with the passage of Measure Y, there was an impact to the cost to the city to do some of the activities. Next slide, please. So staff is recommending that we increase fees using a combination of the CPI, San Francisco CPI, Consumer Price Index, which was 2.67%, and that's for the calendar year 2024, and also a combination use of the, or CPI and the salary adjustments resulting from Measure Y. That would increase most of the fees in the 5% to 10% range. Those that require more staff time or closer to that 10%, maybe slightly higher. Those that don't require a lot of staff time are decreasing at a much lower rate, it's mostly the CPI. There are no new fees recommended in the schedule, it's the same fee schedule that we adopted last November. And then just as a reminder, the outdoor dining rates are based on the previous Village parking rates when we set up outdoor dining in 2022. That comes to an end this year, and then we'll reevaluate the outdoor dining program, I believe in August or September, late, late summer, early fall. Next slide, please. There is in the agenda packet, it was way too busy to put on a slide, but the attachment to in your agenda packet has fees adjusted, has the current fees, has the fees adjusted by only CPI, and then fees adjusted using the full cost, and then I have minus subsidies. There's some fees that we reduce from full cost to encourage community members to do those, a lot of it's around building and planning, sometimes we'll not take the full cost because we wanna encourage that development. And then the variance between the current and the proposed fees, next slide, please. So our recommendation, again, to conduct the notice public hearing, which we're doing right now, to provide an opportunity for public input and adopt a resolution for the fee, adopting the fee schedule for fiscal year 25, '26, using the full cost approach. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council questions?
I don't have any particular questions about the fee schedule. One of the things I was wondering about is, we talk a lot about wanting to encourage economic development, particularly on things like hotels, and we have a number of fees that a developer has to pay the very beginning before their project starts. And for me, I think it might make some sense if we look at a way of, you know, having those fees paid over maybe the first three years they operate, or, or something so that like, and we could pick out certain businesses, like a hotel that would generate TOT tax for us. So at some point, I would like to see us come back and look at our fee schedule and see if there are things that we could adjust how the payments are made to encourage economic development in our city. I don't think we necessarily need to change the amounts, it's just the problem of a person having to come up with all that money in the very beginning of a project to make it happen.
I think that sounds like a great project for the Department of Planning, Building, and Economic Development.
I do, too.
Any further questions? Great, public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll retract for deliberation and a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, wait, is this the right one? Nope. Adopt the resolution approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026 fee schedule.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're coming up to our last item, and it's coming up almost two hours, we're gonna take a 30-minute utility break. Okay, it looks like we're ready to go back in session. Bring us to item I, Treasure Cove Playground Restroom Renovation and Community Center Patio Improvement.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. Last item of the night is the Jade Street property. Many projects going on, so this one's a bit involved. The staff recommendation upfront is to approve the construction plans and authorize biddings for the three parts of the project, some design amendments to support those projects, and then the intention is to return in August with our funding contract approval and any construction awards of items that we've bid. So a little bit of background, if you haven't been paying attention, the Jade Street park site is owned by the so-called Union Elementary School District, in lease long term to the city. The current community center under construction was built in the 1980s, and the playground built in 1999 with some renovations in, I wanna believe, 2017. So the most recent effort to upgrade this space kicked off in November of 2022 with the new long-term use agreement signed by the school district. That agreement had some requirements to upgrade the community center within four years of signing that agreement. In addition to planning for those upgrades, we also started planning for a inclusive playground, known now as Treasure Cove, and that was really spearheaded by the Friends of Santa Cruz County Parks, and I believe some of their representatives are in the audience this evening. So the funding we have for the whole site to date, for the community center, again, currently under construction, there's about $1.8 million of general funding in there, a million dollars from the CNRA grant that was supported by Don Addis, and then $3.2 million in a community development block grant. The playground has approximately $475,000 of general fund contributed to that project. So far, it has been spent on our planning and design, $965,000, which exceeded the initial $850,000 goal to the city in community fundraising, again, by the county park friends. And then we have a pending grant from CDBG for another $3.2 million. That is inclusive of the playground, restroom upgrades, and additional upgrades to the community center. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna go over the scope of each project, some of the plans were included in your agenda packet this evening. We did public outreach, and then fundraising also occurred over the past two years. We have, under contract, Verdi Design, Inc., who has many of these inclusive playgrounds across the state of California, and it includes a full replacement of the playground, so all of the equipment, the flooring, and then replacing it with a universally accessible play area. So from that public outreach, we ended up with an ocean-themed design, again, inclusive surfacing and furnishings, inclusive of that is also a new accessible pathway from the adjacent parking lot, so back behind the community center towards the basketball courts, which I have on the following slide, and obviously designed to be ADA, but really inclusive standards as well, just because something is ADA doesn't really make it all-inclusive, and so this really goes above and beyond the current standards to make it something for everyone. Next slide, please. So just in case you couldn't visualize that walkway that is now also incorporated as part of the project, this walkway currently exists around the softball field between the community center. It's currently DG, which is not an all-weather surface, nor is it ADA, so this would be replacing it with a concrete walkway. Next slide, please. This is a prettier picture to kind of show you the colorings of the park and the equipment and where it is located. The playground itself is fully fenced in to keep the children under control, and then have a front and rear entrance, both with signage of park rules and that type of thing. There is also seating within the park, within the park and a couple of game tables. Next slide. Here are some of the pictures, the main play structure is custom, so that is actually what it will look like. We have worked with the county park friends to include more of those kind of mid-ramp interactive play items, so there's a couple more than what's in this picture here, but the shape and size is indicative of what it will look like. Again, fully fenced, kind of sea, there's an octopus down there that is in bell structure, treasure chest, lots of fun themed things, and then again, all-inclusive for our parkgoers. Next slide, please. So as part of developing the playground space, it really became apparent that the existing restroom needed some upgrades. Not only was it just not ADA accessible by current standards, it also kind of lacked some of the amenities that we would need to accommodate everyone that we're inviting to our new park space. So we went under contract with Boonlow Ratcliffe Architects, who are the same architects who are working on the community center for some of that cohesiveness between the two buildings, and it was not, we considered a full replacement at the beginning of the development of this, but if you're familiar with that structure, there's the restroom and the other half is the storage shed. Within that storage shed, there is a lot of elements that control the park, so irrigation, electrical, mechanical, that's not just that restroom, but literally the entire Jade Street structure, and it would have been a much bigger project to replace that entire facility. So this is a major renovation, but a renovation, not a replacement. So the big difference you're gonna see here in the restroom is this is going from a multi-user restroom to a single-user restroom. ADA compliant, obviously, but also kind of in the same spirit of the park, making this all-inclusive. Next slide. I can, oh, also the walkway is being made ADA compliant. This is hardscape currently, but the slopes are not ADA compliant, so with that walkway from the parks, the playground space, you have a fully compliant walkway to the restroom. Next slide. Here are the exterior, fresh coat of paint, some roof repairs. Next slide. And then here, again, is our major change to two single-user restrooms. So the large green rectangles on either side on the exterior walls here are adult changing tables, and anyone who is larger than a toddler cannot utilize an infant changing table, which we have at all of our parks and all of our restrooms, and so getting these larger changing tables gives the opportunity to serve those who also need it, who are larger than a toddler. The issue with these is that they're very large, and so, and for ADA standards, you have to be able to get around everything in the restroom with a sufficient clearance, and there just really wasn't room in the configuration of the building we have now to keep that a multi-stall situation. So these are two single-user restrooms. Excellent. And then lastly, the community center patio improvements. This was, you've seen this before, and the community center plans from last year, it was considered at alternative A, we figured, we knew that we may not have enough funding at the time we bid that project to complete this exterior work, but this really is about making those outside spaces more user-friendly and places that people wanna gather and be. Next slide, please. So while the current scope of the community center project we have going on right now does leave these patios in a usable and upgraded space, it really doesn't bring them to their full potential. So that is the large patio there on the left that will connect back to the playground, the entranceway, and then the two other patios on either side connecting to the rooms of the interior of the building. Next slide, please. So the exteriors are, the entranceway, this would be taking down those retaining walls, making it completely even space, putting in new benches and just making it a more inviting area. Next slide. The major change here would be in our large patio, there is a significant grade change here, definitely children coming from the park will jump down into the bowl that is this patio right now, so this would be really incorporating this patio into the overall park space. So it's kind of hard to tell in the plans, but on the top left of where we have this part, rectangle off here is tiered, so it's seating and it's also a way to get out of the park, or out of the patio and into the park. Next slide. Then we have the backside of the building, which also has some tiered seating, good for lecturing, teaching, that kind of thing, and then the last one, which the landscape architect calls the quiet patio, a place of reflection, has a water feature. Next slide. So there will be four construction projects, all in, going on on this site at the same time, and these all require separate bid packages. This is required by our funding, and then also, the three projects really have different types of scopes for different types of contractors. So the idea is to sequence this along with the community center construction, specifically to bid the patio work first. The patios are connected to the community center, obviously, and we have a contractor there on site. Bidding this, knowing who is going to do this work, whether it be our current contractor or a new contractor, is gonna be really beneficial into getting this project completed all at once and in time for REC to be back in their space prior to next summer. And then the consultant contracts that support this work would be Verdi Construction for bidding support and construction support, the architects, again, for construction support for the patio and restroom, and then a new contract with the current construction manager on the job coming group, which we bid competitively for the community center project currently under, under construction. Next slide, please. So all in, this project on, or these combined projects on the side are $10.7 million, and currently we have a shortfall without knowing the CDBG of $3.1 million. All these budget numbers included here and in your packet include the contingencies for all of these projects, so we don't expect it to go over. Obviously, we don't know until we bid, but it does have those contingencies in mind. So again, we have, these are the same numbers that we had earlier on in the presentation of the 1.8 for the community center, that is currently under construction, and the current grants associated with that, and then for these new items, the general fund that's currently in there, and then the fundraising from the county park friends. Next slide, please. So this is very difficult to read, but this is a little peek into what goes on in Public Works. Works of kind of scheduling of these projects, and so this kind of displays what I just went over, how we sequence these bid packages and bids and awards, so we all end up in the same construction end in early summer of next year. So assuming that we get the award, and we do assume that we are going to get the CDPG award, as I stated in a couple items back this evening, we would go ahead and bid this patio project here next month. We've received authorization from HCD to do so. It does not require that we award anything that we, the winning bidder. It does not commit us to spending any funds on construction. There are funds incurred, costs incurred for our time for putting it together, for putting it in the newspaper, but there is no construction funds that we are committing to by bidding these projects. Assuming that we, or not assuming, but in the event that we do not get the award, a lot of these projects don't happen. So the restroom, like the city manager mentioned earlier, we would have something bid ready and fully designed in the event that we would want to come back later and do that project. So while there would be those funds already spent, they would still be useful in the future. The patio work would not go on as proposed. We would just have it as it is under the current contract, which is still a usable and nice space, and then the real question would really be the playground. Next slide, please. So again, this is the no award where the grayer items aren't happening. We would have bid the patio project and not awarded it. We would have had these bid packages together, which are still useful, but we would not have awarded any kind of construction project. Next slide. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the next real opportunity that we would have to bid the Treasure Cove project would be early next year, just considering weather and the time it would take to reevaluate the scope of that project and how the city would like to fund it. It would really make the most sense to bid that in January, February of next year and have that be a project for summer of 2026. Also, budgeted in this project is the set aside for public art. This is triggered by any building permit of a public project over $250,000, which is the community center and the restroom. It consists of 2% of the project for construction that is funded by general funds, and quite a bit of this project is funded by grant or restricted funds. So the estimated construction value of general funds spent between both of these projects is $400,000 to $840,000, and that's because the contingency for both of these projects is general fund, and we may or may not spend the contingency. So at a minimum, it's $8,000 to the public art fund and up to $17,000 depending on where we end up at the end of these projects. Next slide. So schedule on next steps, depending on council direction this evening, Public Works intends on putting the patio project out to bid and hopefully awarding the contract along with accepting the CDPG funds at the August 28 meeting. We would start additional construction on some of the exterior work, both of the patios and the playground, and phase that work throughout 2026, and then depending on weather, hopefully complete all three projects by summer of 2026. And so staff recommendations, as is also in your packet, are up here on the screen, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We can start with questions on this side.
So I just have a few questions, and first, I would like to thank Public Works Director and your Finance Director for helping me out today because I'm a little new to this particular project and wanted to make certain that I understood completely what was going on. And so, but one question I forgot to ask was, the $1.7 million number for building the playground, that was an architect's estimate at the time, or how did we come up with that number?
The current, yes, that is the estimate that also from the Verdi Construction, who constructs these throughout the state, based on current bids around, I want to say in the Bay Area, that also is inclusive of that pathway. So that's not just the playground, but it's also the pathway work.
Right. So that's really just an estimate of what it was going to cost to build, and so I'm clear and everybody else is clear. So if, if we reach a point where we don't get the $3.2 million, the city is not automatically obligated to come up with a balance of the money to reach 1.7 out of our general fund, we would go back and we would look at the project and see if we could modify it, change it, so it was less expensive. You know, it would be quite embarrassing for all the people we've asked to donate money to, but it's, it's not, it's not a hard and fast commitment that, that remaining balance would come out of our general fund.
Correct, and we do have a, so when we developed this plan initially, there was a preferred plan and enhanced plan, so the enhanced plan being more expensive, and that's the one that is proposed to be constructed here. There's a preferred plan that was used for advertising the project, also to funders, which was less, so there's money right there, and then also the pathway is something that could easily be removed from the project. So I'm not saying that would get us there, but there are contingencies built in where we can scale this project back and still deliver what we said we were going to, to the public.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, because I just wanted to make certain that, as for me, I wouldn't want to make a commitment to, you know, fund a project that we don't actually have the money for, but it sounds like you've gotten that all taken care of and figured out how it's going to work. So that's all my questions. Thank you.
No questions, just comments, since I see some people from the county park friends and their fundraising group. Just again, thank you for what you guys did in raising so much money. Very much appreciated, and no other comments. I guess just one thing, Jessica, thank you for all the detail on, I guess, a backup plan for just in case. It's nice to see that that, I don't think any of us want to count on our, our funding mechanism from Sacramento at this time, so it's nice to see the contingency plan, and thanks for your efforts in putting that into there, so thank you. I'll bring us to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Clark, council members. Heidi Callison, representing First Five Santa Cruz County. We are one of the funding agencies for Treasure Cove Park, and we became funders with the understanding that the city would be committing the funds necessary to build a completed park, and so we look forward to moving, moving ahead with the project. For those who are not familiar with the First Five Network, it is part of the, there are First Fives in every county of the state of California. It began in 1998. It is the sole government, government funding and policymaking bodies throughout the state for prenatal to five. Children are our most important investment, and the earlier, earlier we start, the better outcomes we have to prevent more difficult problems later down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Clark, council members, Dan Hayfley, volunteer with County Park Friends, and this was a great campaign, the ability to raise 1.125 million dollars for this project felt really good. I also want to thank city staff and Verde for their excellent work throughout this process. It's been almost seamless for us. A comment on the project itself and the size and scope of it, we do hope the CDPG funds come through. The thing about the community of people with disabilities, particularly children, is everybody has a different level of ability. They have auditory issues, they have sensory disabilities, cognitive disabilities, or physical disabilities. For example, if a child cannot transfer out of their wheelchair, they would use the inclusive spinner, but they could not use the slide, for example. A child with visual disabilities could use the sensory elements, including the percussion box or the sansarima or other elements, but other elements they cannot. So it's important to have all the elements that are there that staff worked with Tricia Wiltshire and with Verde to design this, and very much like Leo's Haven, all the elements have to be there. So yes, we have donors who did contribute to specific elements of the playground, but it's also important to consider that every element that's there now is important to have a complete picture for the community of children with disabilities, and that's how we sold it when we went out to the community. So we look forward to that funding discussion. I think it'd be a robust one. If CDPG does not come through, I'm confident it will, and again, I thank you for your support and your partnership and for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we'll bring it back for deliberation and a motion. I do have just a question. It just seems like there's a concern, maybe just take it a little bit further and maybe the city management could just elaborate, on the arrangement that was made. I mean, I think we're all optimistic and maybe next week we don't have to talk about the infamous grant, but just with the commitment that was made by the previous council and the funding on, you know, the 475, and then they went out and raised so many, can you just go through that process again? Because it seems like there, maybe a question came, a little bit of a disconnect around there.
Well, I will do the best to recall, but if anyone else has a different memory, I am welcome being corrected. My memory is that we entered an MOU contract with the Friends. I think it was probably about two years ago, and in that, there was a city council-approved design. Friends committed to raising $850,000, and the city at that point, I believe, had put in $475,000. And so those two funding streams together, combined total, whoever can do that math, 2.1.4, and the cost estimate associated with the project, and the council sort of said, go ahead, let's start the fundraising on, and I think was 1.7, somewhere around there. And so there was built in there, there was a little bit, there was a gap between how much money the Friends had committed to fundraising and then how much money the city had already appropriated. The Friends exceeded their fundraising target, so that gap is different. Those were also cost estimates from several years ago. A lot has transpired in the world, so there's a number of different moving pieces. So I think the city's commitment that we made two years ago was to that plan. As Director Khan mentioned, we do have an enhanced plan now because we believe we're getting the CDPG grant, so we're going to be able to deliver an even better project than we initially anticipated, but that's my recollection of kind of how we got to where we are today.
All right. Thank you so much for that. No other questions.
I am so excited for this project. I'm really proud of Capitola for this vision to build an inclusive, forward-thinking project that will benefit all children and people regardless of their ability. I deeply understand the need for our community members to feel safe and have a sense of significance and belonging. Having open community spaces that promote connection, engagement, and a sense of community really help individuals thrive. I'm in full support of the project and I'm excited for it to break ground. With that, I move the recommended action.
I will second the motion. I do have some comments, though. Thank you, Jessica. I wanted to say I really appreciate it in your presentation, sort of your timeline, the way you presented it, it was really helpful, and for somebody like me who doesn't do this every day, is, is great to see, and I'm sure for the public as well. I guess maybe this is a question or just a thought. We did hear from somebody from the carpenters union. I know a lot of people, they have been doing some work at Jade Street, and we can go, once we go to bid, if they, if it's possible to sort of prioritize those that have been doing work for us, if the numbers are right. I just want to put that out there because I think that that's important, and I'm really excited about this project. I want to be optimistic and I want to see this go through, and it's going to be a great asset to the community, so thanks to the Friends and all the vision, it really shows. Thank you.
Yeah, I concur with that. I think it is an amazing project, and I think it's going to, you know, sort of put Capitola on the map for having a project that's going to be inclusive for all people. I think it's important for us to redo the bathrooms, so they work with the park and the community center, and, you know, I look forward to having all of this happen, and from what everything is, everyone has told me today, you know, I agree. I think I'm quite confident that we're going to get the $3.2 million, which is going to, you know, let us do the enhanced park, which will be amazing for our community. So I look forward to us getting the money and having this project go forward. Thank you.
Most definitely. Looking forward to it. Thank you, staff. A lot of, a lot of hard work, and thank you, Dan and Friends of the Santa Cruz County Parks. It's great to see this actually come, come alive right in front of us, so looking forward to that all. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilor Orbach?
Aye.
Councilmember Westman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye. Motion passes. That'll bring us to adjournment. We'll have a welcome, four weeks until the next city council meeting. We've been doing a lot of heavy, heavy lifting, so see everybody on the 24th. Beginning adjourn.